Call this trustee meeting to order. With this Zoom call, we've got a Michigan Open Meetings Act requirement. When Vanessa calls the role, in addition to indicating you're here, would you please give us the city and state from which you're speaking today? Vanessa, please call the role.
Chair Milliken.
Milliken, Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Vice Chair Davis. Treasurer D'Arde.
D'Arde, Chappaqua, New York.
Secretary Hatcher.
Hatcher here, Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Trustee Fleming.
Fleming here, Dexter, Michigan.
Trustee Landau.
Landau here, Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton here, Ann Arbor, Michigan.
I believe we have a quorum. We have an agenda in front of us for consideration today. Do I hear a motion in support of the agenda, please?
So move.
In support?
Landau's support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Yeah, we have to do roll call for everything, I think.
Yep, we do.
Yes. Vanessa, please call the role.
Chair Milliken.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis.
Yes.
Would you mind letting us know which location you're zooming in from?
Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Treasurer D'Arde.
D'Arde, yes.
Secretary Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. The agenda is approved. Vanessa, are there any public comments today?
No, there was none received.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to turn to EVP Blakey to tell us about graduation salute and commencement parade celebration.
Okay, great. So if you remember last year, we did the grad salute, the virtual grad salute for our 2020 graduating class. And that worked out really well, so we're going to do that again for our 2021 graduating class. But we're also going to have a parade on campus. So we're going to have a parade and we're inviting both the 2020 graduating class and the 2021 graduating class. So the virtual salute will be released on Friday evening at around six o'clock. And then Saturday morning on May 22, which is our commencement day, we will have the salute. Or excuse me, we'll have the parade on campus. And that will be done very safely. People will not be touching each other. We're inviting staff, faculty and staff to come to campus to recognize the graduates, again, being spaced out and recognizing the parade. Students, the graduates will be getting yard signs recognizing their graduation, a goodie bag, T-shirts, their grad cover. And so again, everything will be done safely, but we wanted to kind of take the next step. We had, you know, we didn't really have a commencement last year. We had the salute. And so we're really excited about this opportunity. So stay tuned. Right now, we'll have a better sense of, we're asking students, the graduates to RSVP. So once we have a better sense of how many, we'll figure out the timing because we will kind of spread out the time that they come for the parade. So that we don't have any traffic jams.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Is the board invited?
Of course.
Oh, yeah, okay.
What I don't, what, yes, of course you're invited. You know, I'm not sure, you know, we'll have you, you know, if you'd like to come, we'll have you. We won't be touching anyone, but perhaps being part of the parade and waving and, you know, saluting the graduates. Again, we're going to have everything in the cars going through. We will have a few spots on campus where students can get out with a family member and take some pictures. Again, but those will be spread out, so we're ensuring that everything is socially distanced and is safe.
Any other comments?
I have another question. So would the trustees be sitting down, standing? I mean, how would we be positioned?
I think I would not, because again, it will be a fairly long period of time. So you would be, I don't expect you to be standing. I expect that you would be seated. Perhaps we'll have a platform built where you can sit and sit up high, because it'll be too long a period of time for standing.
Okay.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, Dave.
Will students be walking by?
No, it's a parade in the car. Nope, parade in the car.
Okay.
Oh. I thought that's what you said, but I wasn't sure.
Nope, that, right, no, right, in the car, guys, stay in the car.
So bring your card.
Hey, yes.
I got my bag in.
Right, so again, so again, we're, you know, allowing them to drive through campus, you know, you know, socially get their items that they need in their car. And we don't, they will not be getting out and touching people.
Can they touch people in the car? No, never will.
Well, now, Trustee Hatcher, let's be nice now.
A good tent will be had by all.
I'll try.
I'd like to turn to President Blanca for comments. President Blanca? Your audio is going in and out.
I could call you.
There you go. Now you were back. You want to try? Yes.
Now try this. So, and today is retreat. We are focusing on two extremely important areas of discussion. And one of the things during the pandemic and prior to the pandemic that we have done and always done is focused on how we can teach. Experience for our students and student success.
Off and on.
Our whole goal here is to improve student success and the student experience and do what we can to support that and continue to have our college respond to the needs of the building as well as the campus, as well as our students. So with that, I am going to begin by introducing, oh, no, I'll give it back to you, Chair Milliken, to introduce the first speaker.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to EVP Blakey for student success opportunity.
Are you seeing my slides?
We are. Thank you.
We are in PowerPoint, so it's not. We're seeing PowerPoint.
Are you seeing the PowerPoint? I'm sorry, are you seeing it?
Yes.
I was seeing the PowerPoint in your notes.
Okay.
Yes. Now we're in slides.
Now we're good.
Is it okay now?
Yes.
Looks great.
Thank you, Chair Milliken. I'm very excited to talk about a student success opportunity today. We think this plan that we have has great merit and it will help WCC accomplish two important goals for student success. Be expanding support for WCC students for supporting childcare expenses by expanding financial support. Also, we'll be expanding on-campus space for teaching, learning and student engagement. And which was also going to support our campus master plan. Let me begin by describing how we arrived at this win-win solution. We will be expanding support for childcare for our students. First of all, student success drives every decision that we make at WCC. To be successful, we know that our students need accessible, affordable, consistent childcare as they pursue their education. We also know that we have found that childcare needs of today are different, are very far different than they were when we first established the childcare center and on-campus childcare 53 years ago. Do you remember when everything was done on campus, in person? And see in the upper left, everybody stood in line. We did registration with paper and pencils. We had schedules up on the wall that were marked with markers with red and yellow if classes were added or closed or full. Chemistry calculations were done with a slide rule. I loved my slide rule. Big Macs came in a red box and cost 49 cents. But now, students have registration, financial aid, all the course information is available at their fingertips. Now we have phones that you hold in your hand that are more powerful than a room-sized computer from the early 1980s. And now we have food and other essentials that are delivered by drones. So we've talked about yesterday and today. In 1968, when we established on-campus childcare, fewer students were working. 100% of our courses were in-person on-campus. We had more students with children. The state birth rate in Michigan was 24.9 per thousand population. Now, 80% of our students are working. You know, as part of our application process, we ask if students plan to work full-time or part-time. And 80% of our students are indicating they are planning to work while they're taking classes. 35% of our enrollments are online. That's pre-COVID. We know that fewer students, again, is what they've noted on their application, have childcare needs. And that's also noted as the birth rate now in Washtenaw County is 9.7 per thousand population. That's a 57% decline. We anticipate that our online course enrollment will continue to grow as it was growing prior to COVID. And we, so, and we know that that as we collect the work status of students, we know with on-campus childcare, which covers our course time only, it's not meeting the needs of our current students. Students need childcare that's closer to their jobs, closer to clinical sites and closer to their homes. If we look at our on-campus childcare usage annually, we can see that the utilization has declined over the last five years. And that's looking at the five years prior to COVID. So you can see for the last six academic years, this is the number of students who used on-campus childcare annually over the year. So you can see in 2014, 15, we had 131 students who were using the center. And that's of the 20,000 students that we served that year. And you can see each year, the least of the five years prior to COVID, we had a 30% decline in student utilization of the center. So in 2018, 19, that's the full year prior to COVID, we had 94 students of the 21,234 students that were enrolled that year who utilized the center. That's a 0.4% utilization of the on-campus childcare. This decline indicates how on-campus childcare is not meeting the needs of today's students.
I've got a question.
I'm sorry, I heard someone say they had a question?
Yeah, so these total students, that's the full year enrollment, correct? So one person might be counted two or three times?
No, that's once, each student counted once. So the total students is the number of, so unduplicated. In 1819, we served 21,234 students.
Different individuals.
Different individuals, and they may have been enrolled fall, fall and winter, fall, winter and summer. But they were, those are counting each student once.
Okay, thank you.
So now if we take that annual enrollment of 94 in 1819 and we look at, what does that look like by semester? So remember that for 1819, that's comprised of three semesters. Fall 18, winter 19 and summer 19. So if you see when we look at the number of students using the center by semester, those 94 students turned into 62 students for the fall semester, 58 for winter and 21 during the summer semester. So again, some of those students may have used the center for more than one of the semesters. But again, we see declining use of students using on-campus childcare. So for the year prior to COVID, we had an average of 48 students using the center each semester. So our on-campus childcare serves an average, as we noted, of 48 students each semester. And it costs the college $1.2 million annually. In addition, the college has provided approximately $40,000 annually to support the students using on-campus childcare. And these requests are declining, as we've noted in the prior slides. We also provide support through the foundation, through Perkins and other endowed scholarships for off-campus childcare. And we have found that these requests have been increasing. Again, that off-campus childcare is better meeting the needs of our students. So we are going to shift our support from providing on-campus childcare to expanding support for off-campus childcare that better meets our student needs. This support will increase from $40,000 a year to $200,000 annually. Will provide, this support will provide more tailored support to more students who are working, have clinicals far from campus and have childcare needs that are not being met by our current on-campus childcare. The second goal of this opportunity, and it gives us an opportunity as we change and focus how we're doing on-campus childcare, will provide expanded space for teaching, learning and student engagement. By no longer offering on-campus childcare, we will repurpose this space for WTMC. This will also allow us to meet needs that are, were identified in our most recent campus master plan. The space will be leasable, dedicated space to WTMC and allow us to serve their 800 students. It will also free up prime space in the TI building that's currently utilized by WTMC. We noted in the campus master plan, safety issues. There's congestion every morning and afternoon in front of campus as WTMC parents drop off their students or pick up their students in the drop-off lane in front of campus. That's a safety issue. It's congestion with other cars, with buses. By moving WTMC to use and the FEB, there's a circle drive in the back of campus. It will allow that congestion to be removed because they'll be able to quickly drop off students in that circle lane and not have congestion in the front of campus. That will reduce, also reduce anticipated capital expenditures. Again, our campus master plan noted the need to address the needs of WTMC by expanded space. Their recommendation was to put an addition on to BE with a new driveway to allow, to reduce that congestion. Again, this will be more safe, will have that drop-off circle drive in the back of campus. So the important goals for student success with this opportunity, student choice drove this initiative. We have witnessed declining use of on-campus childcare, increasing use of off-campus childcare. We're expanding support for student care by increasing support by $160,000, which will allow us to serve more students and cover more childcare expenses for students in need and have need that's better met by off-campus childcare. We'll expand space by repurposing underutilized on-campus space, which is now serving an average of 48 students each semester to provide teaching, learning and student engagement space for 800 students per semester. Again, in closing, this solution was driven by student choice. It enables WCC to support more students overall and provide them with better, greater flexibility in obtaining childcare that better meets their needs. And again, it also utilizes, allows us to better utilize space on campus. We believe the timing is right for this student success opportunity because on-campus childcare has not been provided for over the last year and students have needed to find alternatives to meet their childcare needs. This solution will also provide for a $1.2 million structural change to college expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, EVP Blakey. Are there questions on this presentation, trustees?
I have some questions.
Yes, real.
I noted that the current childcare program was using the Y for practicals. What happens to the childcare program for our students that was connected to the childcare center? In other words, students were getting certificates and so forth in childcare by working in our childcare center. So what happens to that? I know it's not happened over the year, but what happens to that program?
So those practicums, I mean, as noted in the course descriptions, there's no guarantee that they would use our childcare center. Students are expected to, you know, have, get their practicum lined up at a childcare center. So in many, I think the majority of those are done by, on off-campus sites and not at our childcare center.
And when did that start?
That's been going on, that's been going on for a while. That course description, you know, basically has the student, you know,
And there's, there's no longer. And there's no longer any connection to the psychology department? As it was when it was initiated?
No.
No. And the $1.2 million that the childcare center was costing us, was that ameliorated by the fees that students pay? Or is that after students payment?
That $1.2 million is taking into account how much students, it's actually 1.3 million. And then 1.2 is after they have paid their fees for childcare.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Diana, go ahead.
Yeah. Maybe Blakey, so we're talking about the center being utilized by another space. And so what are the instructors and other people who work with the childcare, where are they going? What's going to happen with them? Are they going to be distributed if they're able and have the credentials within the system, college system, or what?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question.
Trustee, I mean, Chair Milliken, have you heard of Larry Bartosz?
Sure. Larry, can you answer that for us?
Absolutely. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
The center has been closed essentially for the last year. So we're not 100% certain of all of the employees who were there, whether they found work somewhere else yet. But there are 15 employees associated with the childcare center, vast majority being unionized. We'll be working with the union leadership to make sure that all the language that, you know, pertains to this issue is of course complied with to answer the union's questions, to, you know, to resolve issues, you know, employee issues. But we'll be working with the union leadership to make sure that, you know, we do comply with the collective bargaining agreements and answer all their questions and address their concerns.
Thank you. Is that a question for you, Diana?
Yeah, but then I have another question. So how are we to know that the fee rate at the childcare centers will be commensurate with of the 200,000 you know, that we're allocating for different centers? Because some centers charge more for more children. So how is that going to work out?
So we'll be evaluating that. I mean, now we have a process for, you know, as students identify childcare needs. They work with the Student Resource Center. We determine need and then we provide, you know, whatever, you know, if they're using off-campus childcare, we provide, you know, the support to that directly to the childcare center at once we had, you know, verify that they're using the center. And so, you know, we're indicating $200,000 now and then we'll evaluate, is that, is that fully meeting? Can we fully support the students that we need to support, the students that we identify that have the need?
Well, another thing too, are you going to verify that these are viable centers?
Yes, we have that process in place already. We only do licensed childcare centers.
Okay, and they have to provide proof of that?
Correct, correct. So when we provide, when we do provide support for childcare, we verify the center is licensed and we provide, and then they do verification that the student is using the center. And then the, you know, the support goes directly to the center with the childcare support.
So what's in place for, to make sure that the children are being accounted for, that they are attending that, the daycare center?
Right, so we have a, yeah, we have a verification process for that.
Okay, you did say that. Okay, yes.
Trustee D'Arde.
My question is of a budgetary question and probably for Bill Johnson. Where, when I'm looking at the budget, where would I see that 1.2 million? Or the 1.3 million minus the 100,000 that comes in fees? Where would I see that in our current budget line items?
That, Trustee D'Arde, that would be down in the student, the student support, student activities area.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of EVP Blakey?
I have one more question.
Trustee Hatcher.
In the past, we paid for childcare at our center when the students had classes and a little bit extra on either end or something like that. Are we paying for just when the student has classes? Or are we paying for a five-day childcare center? How are we working out the?
No, when we're, when we're providing support for off-campus, it's the same model where we're providing class time. And then we also, if they need to drive, we provide some driving time. And, you know, in some situations, some study time, but it's generally just when they're in classes.
Okay.
Any further questions? If not, we'll move to a financial update.
I have one more comment. Can I make a comment, Bill? I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
I'd just like to acknowledge a fond farewell to a brilliant idea. We were the first community college to have a childcare center that was connected both to the psychology department and to the program that gave students certification to run childcare centers. And I understand that its need has passed, but it was a, it was a kudo for the college and something that we used to brag about, that we had a childcare center and no one else did. So I want to thank the people who started it and the years of hard work that went into providing it. the people who started it and the years of hard work that went into providing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Memory, Ruth. Any other comments? Now we'll turn to EVP Johnson, please.
Thank you Chair Millican. Trustees, at this, at this time of year, we would be bringing tuition rate recommendations to, to the board. And in fact, we are, we are today. And generally, the way, the way that we do that is first provide the board an update of the, of the, of the financial state of the college, both for the current year and the three-year forecast. And that really provides the board context as you start to deliberate our recommendations around tuition rates. So we will be doing two of those, had two separate presentations. This first went on financial projections and then secondly around tuition rate. This year also, we have a third presentation, which is around all our major capital projects. And we, as you know, we have three major capital projects and one of those, we have a motion to proceed with a both funding and construction. So those will be the three presentations that we'll be going through with the board today. So on, on to the financial projections. Go to this slide here. This is an update of our, the current year, so fiscal '21 financial projections. And this, this forecast, as you can see, which is now forecasting a surplus of about $3 million, probably is not a surprise to the board. As you've been seeing each and every month, as we've been giving the board an up, update on the year-to-date financial results, we have been seeing that generally speaking, that the savings from our operating budget because of not being on campus has been at least equal to, if not outpacing the revenue decline as a result of the pandemic. And that certainly is true here, that we're, that we're forecasting somewhere around 3.4, 3.5 million revenue. Yes, you see on line eight that we're going to be below budget for the year. With a significant portion of that being in tuition and fees, largely from both the fall and winter semester, along with the contact hour fee being an integral part of that 3.5 million below budget you see in line one. Fortunately, state appropriations have turned positive for us this year. The state did not need to cut funding to community colleges. And that really helped. We had assumed that we were going to get the cut. So that's a positive 1.5. But then the balance of those line items in revenue, lines four through seven, really are directly related to not being able to host our revenue generating activities. So they'd be trade partnerships, auxiliary around our non-credit side, and then align seven with conference center. So about 3.4 million below budget is, is, is our current forecast for the current year. But more, but more than offsetting that is both the personnel and the non-personnel costs, which are trending below budget. And those really are the, the strong efforts of the college to be able to deliver all our course content, all our academic curriculum and student support activities, academic support activities in a virtual mode. And as a result of that, we've been able to reduce both full and part-time staff costs and all the on-campus of non-personnel costs related to that. So that, as you see on line 14, that we're, we're forecasting just under $8 million below, below budget. Now, now offsetting that is our fitness center. Generally, our fitness center would generate about 1.5 million a year and what, what I call gross margin, the revenue from member dues less the operating cost for the fitness center. So that gross margin, about 1.5 million, we are not going to see this year. We will be, our gross margin will be about break even. And generally, the college would use that gross margin to, to pay off the debt service, which is about 1.2 million a year and then the deferred maintenance. So that offsets part of our, our benefit on operating costs. So then in total, that we are forecasting a surplus of about $3 million for, for, for this year.
I have one question there.
Trustee DeBarty, go ahead.
Yeah, Vice President Johnson, the debt service on the fitness center, how much longer do we have to run for that debt service before it's totally paid off?
2027, so about six, six more years.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So moving from the, the current year forecast, back actually last May, May of, of, of '20, we had presented a similar three-year forecast for, for the board. And in that forecast, we were very concerned because we were in the early stages of the pandemic, very concerned about its impact on kind of our three pillars of revenue, property tax, tuition and fees and state aid. We, and as a result of that, we also were, were facing the fact that we had about $20 million in capital projects that we, that we needed to, to address. And, and we, we felt at the time that may, maybe the best way to fund those projects would have been with long-term term debt. In large part because of our uncertainty regarding the sustainability of our revenue streams. When you kind of add all that up and you look what, what our forecast was, we actually were forecasting about a $5 million gap. That's what we had presented to the board, that, that we thought could start as early as fiscal '22 with that five million gap. And we had agreed with the board that we would take the next year to work hard on both firming up ways the college could respond on the revenue side and then also look really hard, given the learnings that we as a college have gone through this past year, to look really hard at ways that potentially that we, we could better align that we were able to support our, our students and the college community at a law, a lower cost structure. So let's look at the ways that we've been able to accomplish that. So with this chart, so, so this is the way that we closed the five million gap. And so what this chart shows is on the revenue side, that we did get some help. On the property tax, we're not changing our view. We still hold a conservative view of property tax growth, some between one and one and a half percent a year. And I say that that is conservative relative to what we have experienced, which has been more in the four to five percent per, per, per year growth. Washtenaw County is, is going to be giving an up, an update a little later this month on the assessed values and the growth in assessed values. So we'll have a better read on that. But as of right now, we have kind of pegged our growth with the rate of inflation, somewhere in that one to one and a half percent a year. So really no, no change. State aid is really a kind of a good upside, not only in terms of the state's revision of revenue forecasts for this current year, but also for the upcoming years. They have a more optimistic view than what they did. And as a result, we no longer believe that we need to continue to sustain the view that we have a 10% reduction in, in state aid, but rather that we can hold the view that it'll, it'll essentially remain level. It's noteworthy that the governor's proposed budget actually is a 2% increase. But generally during reconciliation that goes on with budgets, those things have a way of working themselves out to be a little different than that. But so, as a result, we have held to a view of, of holding state aid flat. And last but not cer, cer, when leases tuition and fees. This time last year, we were holding the view that fall '21 enrollment would be about a 10% decline from fall of, of, of '20. That's what our view was when we were forecasting the five million gap. We still believe we're going to have a decline year over year. However, we think that, that decline is now going to be more in the six, the 6% range. Probably just as important though, is a view as to the percentage of our classes that are going to be held online versus on-campus. As, as, as you may recall, that our, our distance learning rates for out-of-district and out-of-state are a much lower rate than they are for on-campus rates for those same residency categories. And so it really does matter as to the percentage of our credit hours of being taught online versus on-campus. Our current view for fiscal '22, that for fall is that about 30% of our credit hours will, will be taught on-campus. And certainly the, the, the schedule that we have up and students are, are currently doing their, you know, their enrollment towards would support that it's going to be in that 30 to 35% set, set range as, as we sit here today. So revenue has really helped close the five million gap by about two, two million. If you look at the cost side, as I mentioned, across a college, there's been some great learnings around ways that we, that we can strongly support students and community, but at a lower cost structure. So structurally, we, we have been able to reduce year-over-year budgets by about $3.3 million. And you, and you can see in that first box, the areas that are, we've, we've identified 10 full-time vacant positions, largely in fact, all on the staff side, and that, and that saved about 8,800,000. Part-time and overtime costs, that's some of those learnings that I've mentioned, that we've been able to find ways to better utilize our resources. The closure of the culinary program will reduce costs by about 800,000. And as you just saw in, in EVP Blakey's pre-presentation, the shift of child, of childcare support to an off-campus direct support voucher, voucher system for our students will save about 1.2 million. So that's about 3.3 million in structural changes, which were an integral part of how we closed the five million gap. Also on the non-personnel side, departments have done just an amazing job of thinking through ways of saving money this past year, done a great job. And so really, we've just reflected what folks have already figured out a way to accomplish in our budgets for next year. And last but not least, is the institutional initiatives largely around equipment replacement costs. We've identified reducing that by about a half a million next year. Now, that one I would say is not structural. And what I mean, mean by that is we're being conservative for next year in terms of our forecasts, both on the revenue side. And so we want to, we want to just be careful as to our spending rates. We do have a long-term equipment replacement plan that the college has worked hard to build. And so we believe that half, that half a million that we save next year is really just time and that, that we'll have to increase equipment spending in the future to help to, to offset that. So that, so the college has made significant progress on the cost side as, as, as part of closing that. So what does that look like when, when, when you look at a forecast now? And so we're, we're, we're pleased to show, show the board that now that our four, our forecast, starting with next, next year and going to fiscal '23 and '24, that we have a balanced budget and, and we're still putting the finishing touches on next year's budget and we will present that to the board at the regular April 27 board, board meeting. But you can see that we have a balanced budget here. Some other, some other critical assumptions that I, that I, I, I would just say that go, that go with that is, is that, that we are, and we'll talk more, more, more about this, is that we are ma, making a re, a recommendation to have no tuition rate increase for in-district students. So we're going to hold our in-district student rates at the same point for, for the fifth year in a row as part of this recommendation for next year. And that out-of-district and out-of-state rates would increase. Now, it's really important, if I can go back to this prior slide, that tuition and fees for fiscal '23 and '24 do assume, and we think this is a very important assumption, that, that we are going to need to begin to increase in-district tuition rates beyond this next year. But, but because of the impacts, the pandemic has been so strongly felt by our, our in-district students and also in reflection of just the strong support that our community has given to the college with the property tax renewal. We worked very hard to see if yet for one more year that we couldn't hold those rates flat. But we do need to increase this and this forecast absolutely assumes that we increase in-district rates, not next year, but the, the years that, that follow in a modest way. So with that said, the third bullet, conference services remains closed for all of fiscal '22. Conference services is an integral part of service for the community. Right now, we're still in the midst of the pandemic, so the ability to serve is difficult anyways at this moment. And we have the ML closure that, that begins at the end of this calendar year and it's going to be closed for the second half of next year. So the college has decided to not reopen conference services on, on, until actually July of '22 for that. All our, all our other ancillary revenue sources, so all our non, our, our non-credit side of the house is, is going to have an on-campus presence. It'll probably be limited just as our credit courses. But they are working hard with their partners to, to continue to build upon the pen, the pandemic model with some on-campus. And lastly, but not leastly, that this, this model also assumes that compensation and benefit increases will follow contractual and historical levels for, for, for all our, for all our employee groups. That's an integral part of the model. So the colleges work hard across the board, both on the revenue side, the strength of all the good work we've done on the revenue side, that we will be able to, to, to really not have a significant decline in, in enrollment and continue to leverage that. So speaking of enrollment, let's, let's take a little bit of time to, to look at how, how the enrollment trends have gone for the college relative to our, our community college peers within the state. So in credit hours, we've had a decline and this is from fiscal '13 through fiscal '20, we've had a decline of about 7.5% for that period of time. And collectively, Michigan community colleges have declined about 32%. So once again, even in the midst of a pandemic, the college has found a way to respond strongly. And it really is built on the backs of the strong programs we have, the ability of our faculty to be able to transition to, to distance learning, being very, very creative. You know, with our virtual classroom options that we've offered. And the marketplace frankly has responded well to our very strong program offerings. Look at that from not a credit hour, but from a headcount point of view, and it, and it tracks the same way. It, it really is very, very strong. One of the ways that we've been able to not have a significant ad, as a decline is, as we've mentioned, is to really leverage the strength of our distance learning programs. And those have been building more and more strongly in terms of the number of programs and courses that we offer. And also just general affordability of our, of our rates. And when you look, look at that, and this is a graph of out-of-district credit hours as percent of total credit hours that we have steadily increased during that period of time. Of course, fiscal '20 had a bit of a bump for us because that included last summer. And last summer, we're virtually all 100% online. So that, you know, just to put a point on that, but that would have been true for all, for all community college, just well for last summer. So we've had steady growth in, 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 in out-of-district credit hours and largely in the distance learning area. So if you look beyond historical, and now you also say, well, how does that trend out? And this really is, so this gives you a view into our assumptions on that financial forecast that you just saw for fiscal '22, '23 and '24 and what are our assumptions on credit hours? And I think the, the, kind of the phrase I'd like to leave the board with is conservatives. We have a conservative view of, of credit hours in, in that balanced budget forecast that we have. So as you can see in both credit hours and headcount, that we are continuing to forecast decline. You know, and, and you can see how those now, 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 now just dropped there. I think it is important to note though, is that while credit hours are declining, that the headcount is not declining at quite the same pace. So meaning that average credit hours we're forecasting are going to continue to strengthen. We saw a dip in average credit hours as you, as you can see. But starting in the fall of '20, we, we saw a nice uptick and that's, you know, that certainly was in, in, in the midst of the pandemic. But what, what we've seen through all our strong efforts from our faculty and staff in the outreach that we've done to our, to our students around completion, that we've had a really strong success and it resonates with students about picking up that extra class. And certainly, as we offer more distance learning classes, that offers that give students a little bit more flexibility to mix and match their classes on campus and off and, and distance learning, uh, to meet their personal schedules. Uh, and so we think that the strength of all of our offerings and the outreach that we've done is really helped to, to have an uptick in average credit hours. And we think that's, that's gonna hold, and I think that's a positive trend for us. So, y- with that said, though, it's important, take a step back and say, so what are the head, you know, the headwinds that we face as a college? What are the demographical headwinds? Uh, you know, in recent studies coming from SEMCOG and others, uh, two really important points is that traditional high, high, high school age students going to two-year colleges in the Midwest is projected to decrease twenty-eight percent from twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-nine. And so we're right in the middle of that decline. And that's real, and that's a strong headwind that we face. To put a more local point on that, just the, just the Detroit region alone is gonna experience a thirty percent decrease in high school students enrolling into your colleges for that same time period. That's a very significant head, headwind that we as community college face with that. Um, one of the ways that we, we've been able to offset that, once again, is through our distance learning pro- programs, which are offered at competitive rates. Um, you know, we have very, very affordable rates, but it's really the strength of our programs, which really have helped us to off, to off, to offset that. So as you look at our forecast, um, we have a finite market, if you, if you will, within Washtenaw County. And so those had, those had winds, the demographical headwinds within the county, we think will, will continue to show in declining credit hours within, wi- within the district. However, partially offsetting that decline will be in our out-of-district, wherein by the strength of our pro, our programs, um, that we, that we believe that we'll be able to continue to fully offset that demo, that same demographical decline that we see in our in-district that will, will be able to offset it in out, in out district, which is a market that, that we, that we think is getting more and more traction for us. And so that helps to temper, uh, that, that view of declining enrollment year-over-year as, as, as we go into the future. If you look at this next graph, which is credit hours by, by mode, generally, you would see a nice gentle trend up of credit hours by distance learning. But it is, as, as you know, fiscal twenty-one kind of threw a little bit of a blip in that. Uh, virtually a hundred percent of our credit hours, uh, were online, uh, for this year. And this includes a forecast for this summer, uh, based, based upon the course offerings that we have, both on campus and online. I, I'd also know for the board that fiscal twenty was unusually high for that year because of the summer. Once again, virtually a hundred percent of our credit hours were for summer, uh, were online. Fiscal nineteen would be a better view of kind of the typical trend and blend between, between on-campus and online. And I point that out because as we move forward into fiscal twenty-two, of course, our forecast says we're strongly impacted by the pandemic and what we can really offer on campus. So still, and in normally high percentage of credit hours are online. And it comes down, so you, so if we whole held, held the view that finally by fiscal twenty-four, that all the impacts of the pandemic in terms of our ability to offer a full offering of on-campus courses, what does that look like? We do think that it's still gonna show that there's gonna be a higher percentage of online than what the typical trend. If I had drawn a tip, tip, typical trend line from fiscal nineteen to fiscal twenty-four, fiscal twenty-four is still higher, uh, because we, because we, we, we have more course offerings that we've offered. And generally speaking, the students that otherwise would not have been inclined to take online, took online. And many of those students have found that to be a really good experience. So we think that's, that's gonna be part of it, uh, for us. So that, that ends the enrollment, uh, the enrollment discussion. Another really big piece of, uh, just the overall financial state of the college is, uh, the funding that the college has and will receive related to COVID stimulus funding. Uh, and so, of course, at last, last year at this time, we had announced to the board that we were just receiving the CARES Act funding. And really, it was just the four point three million, uh, excuse me, about, about five of the six point eight million of the CARES Act money we, we had received, which was the federal portion. We then re, we, we, we then received another slice of fu- funding from the state, which was pass-through money. It was the state's CARES Act money that then they allocated a portion of their CARES Act money down to higher ed, uh, of which made up the, the, the difference for us. So we received six point eight million in total. Of, of that six point eight million, we had a minimum requirement to spend about two point five of the six point eight in student aid. So these are student grants. The student raises their hand and says, I, I have been impacted by the pandemic in one of the areas that the federal government had, had identified as being an eligible need for aid uh, as relates to the pandemic. Uh, we took them through an application process and then, uh, and then they were awarded grants. We had a minimum of two point five. You can see, we actually spent about two-thirds of our six point eight million in direct aid to students that were being impacted as a, as a result of the pandemic. And on the next slide, um, I'll, I'll, I'll go through that in more de- detail, exactly how, how the college spent the six point eight million. I think what's important for the board to see is that there's two other buckets of, of COVID stimulus money that the college, um, has and will receive. I say has and will because the college has been awarded the, the Charissa funding. This is the legislation that passed at the federal level at the end of last year, December twenty, twenty-seventh. We were awarded that money, uh, in late January of, of this year. Uh, and so that award is twelve point four million. Again, the minimum award for that is two point five going directly to students, nine point nine for ins- for institutional needs in our response to the pandemic. And then, uh, certain, certainly, last but not least, is the American Recovery Act, the ARA. Um, that's twenty-one million, that's an estimate. We had, we still do not have our allocation, uh, for that. But that's an estimate of what our allocation will approximately be. Uh, and it's important to note that in that stimulus money, half of the money has to go directly to students. So what's important is not just the amounts, but how we can spend the money, but also the time period to which we have to award and to spend the money. So the Charissa funds, um, we have a, basically, the entire calendar year of twenty-one to spend the money. Um, roughly, that's the time period. And that twelve-month time period mirrors the CARES Act, which was also a twelve, uh, twelve-month time period. The American Recovery Act is still very much up in the air. Uh, so I put down what, um, what the led, the led, the legislation funding with uh, window was for, which was from roughly April of twenty-one. And I say April because I expect that we will get our award sometime in April for, we, we think around twenty-one million. And the funding period is goes through, um, that should say September versus September, but it's September of twenty-three. Uh, that's the funding window. However, we, the, the DOE, Department of Education, um, is prob- pa- probably gonna give us a much shorter window. It could be as short as just twelve months, the same twelve-month window that we saw from both Charissa and CARES Act. But it could be as much as two, is two years. Um, so where, there's a lot that we have to learn yet, both in terms of the time periods and also frankly, the eligibility of institutional costs. But let's, and, and I have a slide to talk a little bit more, uh, about that in just, in just a minute. So this slide here was the CARES Act money. So how did the college u- utilize the six point eight million? And as I mentioned, four point three million went in direct student aid grants. Roughly forty-eight hundred grants were given at an average award of nine, of nine hundred dollars over that twelve, twelve, twelve-month period was given. We also had a number of student refunds. And what I mean by that is, a, a student was caught up in the middle of winter of, uh, winter of twenty and COVID hit. And they had a really hard time come, completing that course. So if the student came to us and said, for these reasons, as a result of the pandemic, you know, I just, I never was a, able to satisfactorily complete my course. There's a process that they went through, through Linda Blakey's office. Uh, and then if we were able to, to verify that, that we would, in essence, adjust their account balance or a refund back against their account. So that was about two hundred and seventy-one thousand. And then there was a lot of direct dates to, to students that came in all of their form. So for instance, tech, technology, either a direct issue to a student of a laptop or a loner of a laptop, but roughly close to eight hundred laptops that the college made available for, for students because we know that technology has been a huge ob- obstacle, uh, during this pandemic. Uh, and in addition to, to that, there are a lot of hot, of hotspots. Students not only didn't have the device, but they didn't have access to the internet. So we also provided students, um, uh, data hotspots so that their laptop would allow them to fully participate in their distance learning coursework that they needed to, uh, to do. There also was a lot of soft, software, uh, that we had to, to provide both to students and to faculty to be able to enable the distance learning environment. You can see with those bar. And then there's a lot of areas, what I call COVID sa- safety measures, whether it been of the hiring of temporary staff in public safety for screeners or custodians that we needed to hire, uh, PPE that we needed to purchase, facility operations costs. Um, there was a lot of extra costs in facility operations that we incurred to, to meet, um, the COVID and CDC guidelines that we needed to provide. Uh, we did classrooms assessment, as you know, we went through a very rigorous process with three different firms to assess each learning space. Uh, and then we bought a lot of, uh, additional air fil- air filtration devices. Uh, so you, you can kind of see what those costs were related to that. In addition to that, there was two incremental costs and just distance learning capacity, uh, specific software and tools, uh, and technology needs and, and training needs too. So there, there, there was some incremental training. Uh, and then lastly, um, although it was not a wide, wide definition of lost revenue as a result of the pandemic, we were able to take advantage of a sup- a supplemental uh, grant that the college got from the federal government for stimulus money. And in that grant of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, they included lost revenue for auxiliary services as one of, uh, as one of those potentials. So we were able to claim that. So you can see that the response that, that we had to the pandemic for the, for its first year and how we utilized the funds largely went to students, and then secondly, to our faculty, and then thirdly, to how to, how to make the campus safe, basically, uh, is, is, is how we did that. So then we move on to Charissa and, and, and the American Recovery Act. Here are the categories, um, and, and this is in addition to the student aid, the direct student aid. So the institutional portion of eligible ca- uh, categories. So technology costs, and again, all, so there's two caveats for this. Um, any incremental costs that's eligible should not have been in your budget, just to start with, meaning that, that, that these funds are to be used for two incremental costs, not cus- not costs that were already in your budget. So they, 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 they cannot have been, been, uh, been budgeted costs. Uh, and they need to be in direct response to the pandemic. Direct response to the pandemic. Uh, so with that in mind, technology costs, certainly, we continue to uh, have to beef up in many different ways, uh, our technology infrastructure and costs to support students and faculty and staff. Uh, staff trainings, you know, as we adapt, any incremental costs, you can see all these. Um, two new ones, student support activities. So they, they wrote into the legislation, both for Charissa and the American Recovery Act, student support activities that are in direct response to the pandemic that meet the definition of the Higher Education Act that was passed in nineteen sixty-five. That's, that's, that's what we're working with in terms of definition. That's a new one. So we're really lo- looking hard, both from, um, the instructional side and from the student ser- ser- services side, ways that we can leverage this support as we continue to address student needs facing the impact of the pandemic. And then the last bullet arounds loss revenue, and this is a very important one. Um, as opposed to the CARES Act, which did not provide much opportunity for loss revenue in both the Charissa Act and the American Recov- Recovery Act, they have opened the doors for that so that they're now recognizing that higher-ed institutions have been significantly impacted by loss revenue, both on the credit side of the house, as well as the non-credit side of the house, and all the auxiliary services side. And, uh, the DOE just, just came out ju- just recently, within the last week or so, um, to say that that's not only prospective from when these funds were just available, but you also can reach back retroactively, back to the date, back in March, when the federal government declared a state, a state of emergency around the pandemic. So we, we are, um, doing, uh, our cal- calculations as to what that lost revenue potential might be. Uh, and, and, and we believe that to be a significant recovery opportunity and a, a strong use of the funds for the college. In essence, it allows us to recover revenue that we had already lost and be able to put that back into our general fund reserve, which we think is significant for us. And then, um, oh, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll stop, stop there. Any questions folks may have on, uh, COVID funding?
A question on the Charissa money. So we haven't, uh, recognized any Charissa money in the current budget year. Is that correct?
That is, by, uh, tr- trusty buddy, you mean current budget year, the fiscal twenty-one?
Correct.
That is, uh, that is correct.
But it's conceivable, because of the retroactivity, we may be able to take, um, losses of revenue and get that replaced from that Charissa money, even though it happened in this budget year?
That is, that is correct.
So that could show, and that would show up in next year's budget? Or when would that show up? I, I know they're still developing the
Yep.
parameters. Um, would we revise this year's, um, budget for, prior to audit? Or would we just allocate that to next year's budget?
So, yup, so, um, so, so depending upon the, the DOE's final guidance on lost, on lost revenue, um, which we think there's gonna be another, another round of guidance within the next month, that the college will take all that guidance and then it will actually, uh, ask for reimbursement for Charissa funds and, and ARI, A, A, ARA funds for loss revenue, going back to March of last year through June of this year. And that'll be recorded as revenue in this, in this year.
In this current fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then one other question, which isn't reflected in either of these funding sources. Um, I did notice, uh, watching the news yesterday for the first time since I made this trip to drop my daughter off, that the Senate parliamentarian is allowing the Senate to use budget reconciliation uh, again, to potentially pass the infrastructure plan that the administration, federal admin, the Biden administration is, uh, putting forward. And I do know that there is some, uh, sense of what they've put on the table of, uh, money going to community colleges for higher ed. We, we aren't thinking about any of that at this point, even though we have some infrastructure, significant infrastructure investments on our immediate horizon.
Yeah, none of, none of that possible uh, additional funding sources has not been baked into any of our thinking. Although, depending upon the, the, the finer points of that legislation, when and if it's passed, um, that might be an op, and another opportunity to help fund some of our major capital projects.
Okay, thank, thank you. Any other questions of? Any other questions of Bill? Back to you, Bill.
Okay, thank, 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 thank you, Chair Milliken. Um, so on the next slide, uh, and, and we'll go into more detail on this on the third presentation um, around capital projects, but just to give the board an op, and, and, and update lines one, two, and three, uh, add up to about twenty point five million for our major capital projects. We also have our technology and infrastructure improvements, uh, which can continue, uh, to have significant investment. You really need to view that as deferred maintenance, just like buildings, uh, that, that, that need to be maintained. And of course, we have our deferred maintenance. Um, and you'll note that in fiscals twenty three and four, uh, we've increased that to three million because we really, in fiscal twenty one, we shorted ourselves. We really need to be on average about two and a half million a year. So, uh, some, some of these categories, we can take a, a tem- a temporary reduction like deferred maintenance, or as I mentioned before, around equipment. But we really need to have a plan to replace that in the, in the future, which, which we have here. So in summary, the, the, the college this past year is just done an amazing job of responding to the pandemic, both instructionally and operationally, uh, just outstanding. Uh, and, and you really see the fruits of all the good work that's been done across this college. The fact that we're able to have closed the five million gap and do it in a way that allows us to sustain a balanced budget, to continue to pursue the strategic initiatives of the college, uh, and to respond well to what students are demanding in terms of instruction in programs, uh, it's, it's very, very strong for us. Uh, the COVID funding certainly, um, has been a blessing for the college. I mean, you saw the way that we were able to use it to support our students and to meet the true incremental costs that the college has, has, um, has incurred and will continue to incur. I mean, we continue to do assessments, uh, to prepare the college for this fall as we anticipate using most of our classroom spaces, albeit less students in each. Uh, and then last but not least, the, um, recovery of the one-time lost revenue money that will go back into our gen- our general fund reserve, creates a strong opportunity for us to no longer have to rely on long-term debt to be able to fund capital projects, which is what we were facing a year ago. And, and to be able to use general fund reserve uh, to be able to, to fund the, the remaining balance. Uh, so it, it really is, um, the college has done, does an amazing job, frankly. And this forecast reflects the strong work of the college.
Bill, this is a speculative question. There are reports around the country about, uh, community colleges and, and, uh, four-year institutions in, in great financial disarray and closures of, of colleges. If we were to hypothesize that, that twenty eight percent enrollment, uh, decline that you showed earlier of, were to force the closure of some Michigan community colleges, we've got twenty eight of them around the state, would that inure to our benefit in some, uh, backhanded way? Because there were fewer schools and more people would turn to Washtenaw Community College for an opportunity?
I think that's right, Trustee Milliken, is that, you know, the strength of our distance learning pro- pro programs, uh, so, you know, kind of, kind of assuming that whichever of those schools might be struggling, uh, and students might turn to other options. And if they're not driving distance away, that our distance learning programs um, are so strong and rigorous, the quality and just the number of programs that we have. And just the general affordability of, that I think will be a very strong, strong option for those students.
Good.
I have another question following up on.
Go ahead, Dave.
The, um, so I think it's a year ago. I remember on our agenda, some sort of partnership arrangements with in other parts of the state, and I forget if it was high school or where we were, uh, using our, or other learning institutions were making use of our distance learning in partnership for part of their programs. Is that, am I remembering that accurately? And is that something that could grow in the future?
That is right. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ask, uh, E, uh, EVP Burns, uh, if, uh, if she wouldn't mind to comment on that.
You know, I think that that's, that's consistently been something that took place at the college. Um, it's definitely grown during COVID. And I think that we should see it grow more because people will have had an opportunity to see um, how rigorous and how effective, um, learning at Washtenaw Community College is. Um, and probably have a, a different opinion of community colleges in general. Um, I think I'm most proud that our online offerings, I think, definitely differentiate um, from what students are seeing and experiencing at other schools, be it K-12 or at other colleges.
Thank you.
Any other questions of EVP Johnson? Great presentation.
I do, uh, Chair Milliken, if I may, this is a.
Please, go ahead.
Just a quick question, um, going back earlier in the presentation, uh, you touched on the, um, the non-increase of the in-district, uh, tuition. And has it, um, the, has your department or any of the other, um, personnel kind of got an, I get an idea of how much of an increase that will be considering that the, there's been a decrease in an enrollment. We've been flatlined for in-district increase in tuition rate. And then the increase of out-of-district online, uh, tuition and fees. So how much of an increase do you think we would need to make up during this pandemic that, you know, has thrown everything out of sync? Has there been any, um, dollar amount, um, discussion on that?
Trustee Davis, that's a really good question, you know, um, the, the, holding the in-district rate level, uh, is worth, um, versus what we would typically have recommended, which is a one dollar per credit hour increase. So that one dollar per credit hour increase for in-district students um, is worth approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Uh, and so it's, that, that's, that's kind of the value that the college has to find other ways to fund for. Uh, and what's really important about, about that question isn't just the one-year value, but the compounding impact of holding the in-district rate flat for multiple years, right? I mean, so if you think, think, think about that uh, over a five-year period of hold, you know, flat, that's significant. Now, I think what's also important is to note is that, um, while we have and are going to recommend it, my next presentation will, will show this, um, that, that while we are going to continue to recommend a increase in out-of-district rates, uh, that even with those increases, that, uh, the demand for our out-of-district distance learning courses have still been strong. So we have been able to offset, up until now, we've been able to offset the loss of revenue by holding in-district rates flat by the growth of our, of our out-of-district rate, um, credit hours, even with the increased rates year over year for that. So I, I do think we have the right balance here. But as I mentioned before, I don't think whole, holding in-district rates level beyond this next year, um, would be advisable. And that, that we do need to start to look beyond fiscal twenty-two, starting to increase those, those rates.
Right, and I do, I do agree with that. And, um, so, say, we'll do a dollar increase, just to throw it out for the, make the point. So when, when that increase has been, uh, implemented, then what we will do, what, is hold it flat for a couple of years and then incrementally, incrementally, every other year, increase it, you know, to, to, to kind of make up for loss. Um, uh, I think that would be great. I, I don't know how that would actually work out in the favor of our in-district students, if they like that. But, um, you know, we, I think that is something else to look at in terms of making up um, uh, for, for loss, uh, coverage, budgetary coverage for our tuition and fees going forward. And I do agree that we do need to look at that and kind of figure out what, what's an, um, uh, a, a common ground for, uh, you know, for, for, for what I want to say, um, to me, me, meeting the indoor, the in-district and the out-of-district, uh, demands of our tuition budget.
Very good. You know, my, my next, my next presentation will have a little bit more data to talk further about that topic.
I'd actually.
Oh, okay.
To throw something in here at some point.
Trustee Duarte, go ahead.
Um, I just want to say, as one of the person who's been most, uh, vocal about maintaining for you, for our in-district taxpaying constituents, um, keeping the tuition rates as low as possible and, uh, holding the tuition steady has done that. Um, philosophically, going forward, I'm okay with, as we need to, increasing the in-district rates. Um, what, what, if we have to, modestly, but I'd like to also, at the same time we need to do that, to look at it not necessarily dollar for dollar, but to look at increase in need-based financial aid. So as the tuition rates goes up for our in-district taxpaying constituents, slightly and modestly, we also recognize that there are people economically challenged that have financial need. And we, it also shows some increases there to make, to continue to make higher education, post-secondary education accessible to everybody in our county. And, uh, that's just a philosophical thing. I'm comfortable with, um, some tuition rate increase down the road. But I'd also like us to continue to support with fin- need-based financial aid, people with the economic need that come from our county. That's just a philosophical statement moving forward.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I have a question or a comment. Um. Are we planning for twenty thirty-nine when we'll have a baby boom as a result of the pandemic? And eighteen-year-olds wanting to go to college? I just thought, you know, long-term, long-term planning, twenty thirty-nine will be a boom year.
I don't know, I still don't have any grandchildren, Ruth.
No.
I got six kids, six kids and no grandchildren, so I don't know what to tell you.
Oh, dear. Oh, dear. Well, as I understand it, we're expecting a whole bunch of folks coming on board. Okay, never mind.
It's funny.
Yeah, Trustee Hatcher, that's just a couple of years beyond our planning horizon.
I see, okay, fine. Well, let's just keep it in mind.
Any other insightful comments? Bill, why don't you proceed?
Thank you. Uh, so now we, we move on to the tuition rate discussion. You've already got a bit of a precursor as to what our recommendation is going to be in, in the context of a financial, uh, plan. But I think it's great for us to go through and see how, how the college compares its tuition rates and cost of attendance relative to our peers. Uh, and similar to prior years, as, as you see, uh, that if you look at, uh, both on a tuition rate basis, uh, and I think what's really important is not just tuition rates, but the full-time cost, uh, cost, cost of attendance. Uh, and, and if you look at, this is ranked by order in that third to last column, full-time cost of attendance for in-district and on, and on campus. So these are our, our on-campus rates. That, that you'll see that we are the third lowest of the twenty-eight at a thousand, uh, seven twenty-five for a full, a full-time load. And this comes from, uh, each year, the twenty-eight business officers of the community colleges, we all fill out the same template. Assume you take an English course and you take a biology course and so on. So this is apples to app- apples, calks, and everybody takes into account their contact hour fees and, and other fees that they may have. Uh, and so these values in that third to last column are coming from each of the schools. And so you, so you can see, uh, how, how we rank, uh, as the third lowest. And I think what's, what's, what's really important is that for those institutions comparable size to us, uh, and just kind of rated as greater than ten, than ten thousand enrollments for a given semester, that you can see that that averages for that size institution at nineteen fifty-two, uh, so we're two hundred and thirty-three dollars, uh, on, uh, below that average, uh, for those in, institutions. So we, we, we continue to do well. If, if, if you look at how that full, that full-time cost of attendance has trended since twenty twelve to now, um, that in total, as an aggregate, that, that the community colleges have increased about thirty-seven percent over the nine years. Uh, and Wa- in Washtenaw has in, increased, uh, eight percent over the nine years. Uh, and so you can see that, that the colleges had a very strong commitment to affordability. And I think as you, you, you've heard us say in the prior presentation, that's, that's not come without a price. And that price is, is that the college, as we face the five million, uh, gap, part of that gap was caused by our commitment to affordability and finding other ways to solve for the revenue that we gave up by not doing modest tuition rate increases. We've had to find other ways to solve for that, and we did. The college as a whole, as I said, did, uh, just an amazing job. But it's, um, it's been difficult. So it's a, it's a really good story in the sense that affordability, uh, our, our commitment to our taxpayers, who, who very, very strong, uh, support for the college. Uh, and you can see that that's how it's played out. So if you look at that, not on a trend line, but you actually look at the data, right? I mean, we're eight, eight point five percent over that same period of time from twenty twelve to twenty. Uh, and you can see the highest school is Muskegon, and they're up by seventy-three percent for, for that same time period. Again, part of that has been, we, uh, we are, uh, as a percentage of our total revenue requirements, we have very strong percentage, so about forty-nine, fifty, fifty percent of our revenue comes from the support of our local, our, our local residents, right? And that is, not all schools can claim that level of support on a percentage basis. Many schools rely at a higher percentage of their operating budget on tuition and fees. Uh, so ours is about a third, many schools is in that forty to fifty percent range. So they, they, they need to increase rates, especially in periods of declining enrollment in order to make their, their, their balanced budgets. Uh, so we, we've been able to, to leverage the support from our community as a way to help keep affordable rates with that. If you look at our, I, at our distance learning rates, uh, and I put in here for reference, the proposed rates for Washtenaw for next year, which I guess, once again, for, for in-district rates, um, there, there would be, uh, be, be no change for that. Uh, so I think what's no- noteworthy here is that our in, in district tuition rates are, are, are very, are, are very low. Uh, and even in the out-of-des- dead district markets, that they, uh, would, would fare well. Uh, the other thing I think it's important to note is that many schools, um, opt for a distance learning fee. So in, in lieu of a different distance learning rate, they have just separate fees that they charge, further, further for distance learning. Washtenaw Community College, for a very long time, has had a separate rate structure, separate tuition rate structure for distance learning. But the point is, is that our, uh, that our distance learning rates are very affordable. And so are our international rates that you, that you can see, um, you know, that, that ours fare well, that we held, uh, the, the rates flat, uh, for this, this year's rate we held flat with last year. Uh, and you can see at two hundred and sixty-eight dollars per credit hour, uh, that is very, very close to the average and right on the median, uh, for that point in time. So that, that our, that our international rates are right in line. So our, our recommendation for next year, um, is that, is that we would, um, for the fourth year in a row, that we would not have. for the fourth year in a row that we would not have an increase. Uh, and really, five out of the last six, six years would not have had an increase in our in district rates. Uh, but we do recommend increasing out of district and out of state and international at the two, three and four percent respectively. Uh, that's comparable to what we've done in many of the prior years for those rates. Uh, and once again, that is um, we have not seen uh any negative impact within the market for that. And we think that's reflective of the fact um that our in district community strongly supports the college. Uh, and that so a lot of the inflationary costs uh that that we incur as a college, really, we're asking our out of district, out of state and international students to help pick up that differential for us through tuition rate increases. So that is the that is the college's recommendation on rates. If you look at fees, um, and this this chart is comparable to to last year. So these are the fees that are applied on a kind of across the board basis, so they're not specific course fees. And so this this information, it this is, it takes me a lot of digging. I have to go into each website and kind of find their fees, uh, and they're not always as apparent to find. So um, this is my best calculation of fees from each of these institutions that are applied across the board. Of course, for Washington, we have just one, one fee. It's our technology enrollment fee of 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 ten of ten dollars per credit hour. Uh, the average is thirty one, where and we're at ten. Uh, I think it is also no, no noteworthy that about eleven institutions have a separate facility speed that air averages around nine uh nine dollars. Um, and maybe that would be no noteworthy for discussion in a future, a future year. Sure, sure, may not for this year, but as we look at our fee structure uh, and that is uh very, very competitive relative to our peers. If you look at the details of our fees, uh, and we're not making any recommendation of changes in fees, uh, but these are the, these are the fees that we have on a per credit hour basis. Um, departmental course, uh, course fees that are really helping to offset the the two incremental uh supplies that are incurred um by running those courses. And then on the next page, uh, transaction fees uh that that we have. There are other fees that are charged to students, which uh we don't have, we're not asking for board approval for those. They're pass through fees. It just the college, it's cheaper for the college to buy it on behalf of the student. So, you know, for this, for this kit here, it costs us ten dollars, we charge you ten dollars. We we then get reimbursed the ten dollars. So there's, it's just a break even. So those, we don't ask for board approval. It's just the ones that are that are more on a on a per course basis or per tran- tran- transaction basis that are not directly offset by costs. So in summary, uh, once again, that our recommendation is is that we we strongly acknowledge that affordability is is just really, really important to us. It's been one of the cornerstones for the college. Uh, we also know that our students continue to face the impacts of COVID. Uh, it's, it has persisted in many, many, in many ways with our students that we're not recommending any increase in in district rates. Uh, and so this will be the fourth year in a row that we've not had a, that we're not making a recommendation for tuition rate increases for in for in district. Uh, and frankly, it it just reflects also that um residents of Washington County continue to strongly support us with military uh military rules, and that's such an important part uh of the puzzle for us. And like likewise, no, no recommendation for increasing fees. Chair Milliken, that that concludes my second presentation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this presentation, trustees? President Blanca, do you have anything to to add? So we've got audio troubles with once again.
Well, I'll say something while she works out her audio. Um, I I like the way you you run numbers, Bill. Um, it's really an amazing change from the last time we looked at this. And kudos to you and to all the staff and employees for making it happen. I appreciate it. We're not in a panic mode today.
I I'd like to say something. I want to really thank the broad community, the taxpayers of the county for enabling us to do this with their generous support over the past year in renewing our millage by better than a two to one margin. The strength of that support is reflected with uh what we're able to do in presentations like this. And I want to thank the broad community for that support.
I am now unmuted. I'll pass on my comment.
All right. Thank you, President Blanca. Any other comments from trustees? And Bill, do you have anything further?
I do. Thank you, uh, Chairman. And I'm gonna go grab one, one more presentation here. Let's grab it here.
Excuse me, uh, is there anywhere we could take a break? Or we can just do it whenever.
Bill, what additional presentation time do you think you need?
I I would say uh about a half hour, so I certainly uh I'm plenty time for a break, so.
Well, let's um, let's have a five minute break and uh and return at uh two forty six. That work for everybody? Great. See you in five minutes. Thank you.
Bill, are you there?
I am here, yes.
No, Bill Milliken.
I'm sorry, Milliken is. We have to share the limelight, Bill.
I understand. I just wanted to say um off the record that um I subscribe to the Michigan Chronicle. And I certainly enjoyed, not this month, but last month was a wonderful article about you and your father and your family um and Michigan, and um uh it was, it was a great piece of work, so.
I have not seen it. If you have a copy around, I'd love to borrow it from you.
I will say I will get it to you. Yep.
I'd be, I'd be grateful.
I said, I got rid of all my subscriptions because I don't read them, but that one I keep, the Michigan one.
Well, the Michigan Chronicle used to be a great fan of my father's, and he got, and he's day, he got quite a bit of ink from it. But I didn't know about this recent piece.
Well, you're in it and your mommy's in it, and everybody's in it.
Oh, my goodness. It must have been hard up for news that day.
Yeah, right. Mm-hmm. It was very nice. I'll send, I'll get it to you.
I appreciate that. Michigan History Magazine's uh
Yeah.
March, April edition uh has a cover story um on my father in his uh his era too. So uh they have a distribution circulation of about one hundred thousand copies. So it uh got great play in Michigan and around the country, I guess.
Yeah. Well, it's a very, it's a fine um journal, so I enjoy it.
Well, thanks for sharing that with me. I'll look forward to taking a look at it.
Okay.
Hi, do you guys have any COVID vaccination?
Say again? What was your question?
Ruth, that was me trying to make a phone call and I forgot I was on
Oh, that's okay. Okay. Sorry.
Down more vaccinations for my little people.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll resume in one minute. Okay, we're back from break. I'd like to call our meeting back to order and return to EVP Johnson for his next presentation, Bill.
Right. Thanks, Chair, Chair Milliken. Uh, so the last one is on capital projects update. And we'll, we'll, we'll go through a soft summary of capital expenditures. Uh, we're talking about the student center, the maintenance garage, re- replacement project, and we'll finish up with the Morris Lawrence. And then just generally um our funding recommendations uh for 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 those projects. So as we, as as you saw the slide in my first presentation, uh, the focus today will be around uh the first three line items. So Morris Lawrence Building, which we're now forecasting to be at uh ten, at ten million dollars. That's the budget. Uh, the board had approved back in December of nineteen uh the establishment of that project at nine million to be funded out of general fund reserve. Uh, and we'll talk about it in a bit, but uh we now believe that project is going to be at ten, at ten million. Um, Student Center Building at eight million, and then last but not least, the Maintenance Building, which has some really interesting pieces to it. Uh, it's the smallest in dollars, but really interesting that that we'll talk about. And as I mentioned before, we we do believe now that those three projects can be fully funded out of general fund reserve. Um, the board had approved nine million out of that twenty million to be funded for the Morris Lawrence. So we think now that we are in a position to fully fund it and to avoid long, long term debt, which is tremendous. So on the student center, um, that, this is still an estimated cost at eight million. This is um strictly a deferred maintenance project. When we presented to the board, um, our vision for the student center, it really was a center for success. And uh that had, it it was a trans- a transformational project as to how we could bring uh the best focus of support for students and for our community and employers. Uh, an amazing concept uh that we were hoping to leverage a state capital outlay funding for. And because of the pandemic, they have, at least for the time being, uh, they have put all that on on hold. Uh, so we have scoped that project to strictly a deferred maintenance project. The board had approved us moving head with Fishbeck as the the architectural engineering firm for it. Uh, Fishbeck's made great progress. They have done complete assessment of of our HVAC systems. Uh, the college staff along with Fishback, we've gone through assessments of different ways of of replacing that HVAC system. Uh, interesting building. It it's got eight separate HVAC zones. Uh, each of those zones serves a vertical stack of the building. So just think of eight, eight slices of this of the student center vertically. Uh, and there is, so there's eight of those, so. Uh, and there's a distribution system that's tied in, of course, with all all those. So we've landed on a final HVAC uh solution that met all the key attributes of reliability, of performance, of cost, and of energy savings. That was an inner, a very integral part of this as well. Uh, and also meeting our new standards around COVID. COVID defined uh airflow requirements. We've kind of leveraged that uh with this project. Uh, Fishbeck is completing their final uh design work and initial cost estimates. And so we, we, we believe that we'll be ready to finalize the bid documents in June and and actually bid it this summer. Uh, and that will be before the board in in September with a recommendation for the the final estimate on the cost, which now we believe is eight million. Um, and that uh also a uh recommendation for the the contractor to do that work for us. Once that's approved, uh, we'll actually start ordering that HVAC equipment. And um, we'll, the third uh, the, we'll actually start doing that work in March of next, of next year. Um, and it'll be done in four sequences. Uh, it'd be two of those vertical stacks per uh per phase and in four sequential phases that will move through the building. Um, and we'll have to work with all the folks that work in in this building and and rely on service to figure out ways to continue to do that while we're doing this this work. Uh, and that'll be the good logistics work I have before us. And this project will will be done uh in about January of twenty twenty three is our current estimate. Takes between two and three months per each of those four phases is is what we're estimating for. Move on to the, we move on to the facilities maintenance uh building. Uh, and it really, we're looking at trying to solve a number of things. We have a maintenance garage, which is, we're, we're using it beyond what it was really designed for. It really was designed for storage uh of vehicles and equipment. Uh, and we've, we've morphed over the years to use, to using it for staff. Uh, and that's not the best use of that building, and we really need to return that building back to its original uh use, which is storage. Uh, we'd really need to address the ongoing storage needs of our two key trade partners, the UA and our uh iron workers. Um, we have them squinched in the storage and receiving building or SRB building. Uh, and that, they're kind of busting out of the seams uh there. In addition to that, the UA has growing curriculum space. Uh, the board might recall that a few years ago, when we expanded the SRB building, we also accom- accommodated uh classroom and lab space for the UA in the SRB. Uh, the great news is, is that that they uh that their curriculum's growing, and they'd like to add additional labs. And and frankly, the the space that they're in now is not ideal for what they're they're doing. So we need to address cro- uh growing curricular space that they have as well. Uh, and then frankly, we also would like to begin to star more of our WCC vehicles indoors versus outdoors. Uh, just the wear and tear of outdoor storage on those things, it shortens the use of the use, the useful life of those vehicles. And so we'd like to, we'd like to bring those back more into in indoor storage for some of them. And last but not least is consolidate our our team within um facilities. I mean, they're kind of cast amongst the campus, uh, and it makes it harder for us to manage as a team. And it makes it harder for us to manage as a team, the duties that we'd like to do. So we'd like to bring all those, all those team members back into one space. So as I said, it's the, the smallest of the three projects, but it, it has some really interesting needs that have been defined. So we looked at two options. The first is, is to expand UA's correct, curricular needs with, with, within the storage receiving building or SRB. We've estimated that cost to be about $900,000 to expand their, their space. We have had conversations with the UA and, and they're of course willing to reimburse us for, for, for that cost. But in doing that, we then displace other activities and stuff that's going on in SRB. And so we, as a result of all of all that, we, we would need to build a new maintenance building for people and for activities. And that we would need to return our maintenance garage back into storage. And so the cost of doing all that work to address the needs of UA, to, to return our maintenance garage to what it really was intended to be and to build a building for our, our maintenance team. It'd be a total cost of about 3.5 million reimbursement for UA of about 9.50. So roughly about 2.5 million would be our net cost. That's option one. And that's, and that's, that's doable. Option two, which is the option that we, we are going to move forward with is really we, we approached the UA and said, you know, it's frankly, it's not ideal that we kind of squinched you into SRB with all your curricular needs. What about if we look at expanding the Great Lakes Regional Training Center to accommodate your current classroom and lab needs? And it, and then to add to it for the additional lab, lab needs. That building, when it was built, can be readily expanded. So it's, and it's really an efficient use of an expansion dollar for, for that. And what that does is it, it then allows us to consolidate all of the facilities team into SRB because UA no longer would be in there. And we would move the storage space that both UA and iron workers have now in SRB. And we move that into the maintenance garage, which is a consistent use with what that building is intended for. So it really is a win-win-win. So that, that cost is slightly less. We're currently estimating about 3.4 million. So even net of the UA reimbursement, the same reimbursement they would have paid us if we expanded SRB, it would still come out to roughly the same 2.4, 2.5 million. So the recommendation that we are going to proceed with and would love to get some feedback from the board on this is that we would, that we've, we've already talked to UA and the UA has talked to their training fund board. And they are very much in favor. They haven't given us final approval until June. But they are very much in favor of really option, option two, which would be to expand the Great Lakes, move all their curricular needs over, move their storage into the maintenance garage. And the other great benefit for the college is that for a large part of the year, the Great Lakes building is available space for the college use. And we do use it when, when, when UA is not using it. So now we would be able to expand the Great Lakes building, provide additional, additional lab and classroom space that can be used for the college. So we are, we're, we're thinking that we need to move with option two. We think that's the best alternative, not just for UA, but also for the college at no net cost difference from option one for us.
Any trustee comments on the options here?
Yes, I have one, if I may, Chair Milliken.
Please Angela, go ahead.
You're stating the expansion of the Great Lakes building. I'm, I'm guessing it means you're going to add square footage?
Yes, that is right.
What size is it at now to what projected size you're looking at? And I'm guessing this is the building that's across from the, from the the Flowers, Damon Flowers building? Is that correct?
No, this is actually trustee Davis, this is the building that's on the far east end of the OE building. So it's on the far east side of the OE building on the kind of the north side. When, when you're looking at it from the, the big parking lot there, it's got a nice big glass front on it. That's the Great, the Great Lakes Regional Training Center.
Okay.
Yep. And, and they already have a number of classrooms and, and labs in there now. And they even have a small, I'll call it an auditorium, a small auditorium there, you know, as well that they use. And the UA paid, paid for that building, which is attached to the OE building. I, I don't have the exact square footage of what Great Lakes is today, but we would be adding roughly, I think it's around 8,500 square feet that we would be adding to, to that building. But it, from a footprint standpoint, it, we're just, we're, we're kind of extending it and extending it to the east a little bit on the second floor, extending it out into their dedicated parking loading dock area. And we have re, we reviewed those plans in concept with UA and, and they thought that, that, that way was a great approach.
So storing the WCC maintenance, not, correct me if I'm wrong. And then, and I may be, I may have heard it incorrectly, but the, the maintenance vehicles, WCC maintenance vehicles, are those the ones you're talking about that's going to be stored there? And if, if so, why not at the, where the facilities complex is at? Why not have them stored over there?
Right. Yeah. We, we would actually be storing the WCC vehicles in our current maintenance buildings, which is over and adjacent to the Damon Flowers building. Yep. So, so vehicles would not be stored over in the Great Lakes building, but rather we would have an opportunity to store them within the existing maintenance building, which is adjacent to Damon Flowers.
Okay, okay. Well fabulous, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Option number two looks pretty solid to me.
No, I have no problem with it.
Any other comments?
I just want to say I'm on board with option number two. It looks like the best idea all around.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. So moving on then to the Morris Lawrence Building. So the total cost of this building is going to be about 10, 10 million dollars. As I mentioned, the board had approved in December of 19, a 9 million dollar project. And to be funded with general fund reserves. The, the reason for the change from nine to 10 million has, has to do with two key things. One is when we were doing all our COVID air distribution and building inspections to get ready for activities last summer in the Morris Lawrence Building. While originally we thought the air distribution system was in fine shape. When we did the assessments for COVID last summer, we realized they weren't in great shape for two reasons. One is the duct work itself was lined with insulation on the inside. And that was starting to deteriorate and causing performance issues that you just couldn't resolve readily. And secondly, a, a lot of the mechanical air distribution, you know, devices were not in very good shape. And that was causing problems frankly, frankly, in that building. So of the 1 million dollar increase from nine to 10 million, about 750,000 is to replace the air distribution system, which was not in the original scope. The second piece of it, so 250,000 is on the academic side. We, we, we found the needs for two things. One was we would like to, to find a new permanent home for the art gallery. And we thought a really great spot to do that would be off of the main atrium area. And, and to build a permanent art gallery. As, 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 as you may know, as a result of some renovations, we did an SC. We needed to close down the art gallery. It's been kind of a, a movable art gallery, you know, across the campus. And we'd like, like to find a permanent home for it. The second thing is, is in our music program, the audio studios, that we really need some renovation work. And so we have, we had both of those elements bid out. And, and those two, we'd like to also add into the scope. So between the air distribution and some academic improvements to ML caused the extra million of increase there for the building. This, this building would, our project starts late this year, complete, ready for use July of next year. A focus on energy conservation has always been at top, top of mind. And really excited about the fact that we're going to be able to save about 14% in energy conservation as, as a result of this project. In all public areas of the building will be fully renovated system, new HVAC system throughout the building. And as I mentioned, actually two new, two new academic spaces to be either added and or renovated is in scope for, for this building. So you can see the areas that are being impacted. This is just a schematic. It's so it's, it includes all, all the restrooms. It includes the skylight. It includes the hall, you know, the hallways, the finishes. It's, and I've got some pictures here, some updated pictures. So we've gone through the final, you know, finishes selection as part of the, the bid process. So this gives you a sense. This is from the main entrance, so the east side of the building, the main entrance. All that crumbling cement exterior that we, we did temporary repairs this year to make sure it was safe. But we are going to encapsulate all, all that with new enclosures with metal. And so it's got a real fresh look. We're, we're updating the sky, the skylight system. We're putting skylights just on one side, on the north side. Again, for energy conservation and cost saves, savings. The skies, the skylights on that side. If we flip to the west side of the building, in addition to encapsulating the entrance ways, we're also adding an exterior patio that'll be of, of great value. We don't really have many of these around campus, just patio space for students and community to use. So that'll be a nice, a nice addition for the campus. This is a look back from the east, the east side of the building. West side of building on the pedestrian side, you can see that patio in there. Starting to walk in the building now. This is coming from the east side as you walk in. Replacing the tile floors, which had really bad freight with terraza floors. You see the sky, the, the skylights on the north side, that kind of right side as you look up. We're replacing all the walls, the wall finishes with a lighter wood and laminate, laminate on the movable doors. In large part because of weight, you need to be able to function the doors. So we're going with matching laminate for those. Start to see, we can start to look in the buildings. This is from the other side. The terraza floors with the WCC from within the floors with the conference room open. You can see the various looks as you're looking in there. Now we're looking in, you know, the main conference room areas with all, with all the, the movable walls open. You see how that nice fresh look is there? The entrance to Towesley will be re, be redone to match the, the wooden surfaces. New, new lighting fixtures throughout, again, a lot of our energy saves, saves is coming both from an HVAC system and from lighting, both as part of our plan. You get to feel what that looks like. So that, that in total, as I mentioned, that we're asking the board and you should have a formal board discussion memorandum that you should have received from Vanessa that lays out in more, in more, more detail, the request for the board to in, increase the board's approval of this project from 9 million to 10 million for the 1 million difference being the, the areas that we just walked through. And that like the original recommendation where the board approved the project to be funded from general fund reserve, we're asking for this incremental 1 million also to be funded from general fund reserve. So the full 10, 10 million out of general fund reserve. It's also recommended and you do have in your package the bid summary for the construction contract. We're recommending to go with Stenco Construction Company. They, they not only were the lowest bidder, we, we took this through a very rigorous process. So we had a pre-qualification, vendor pre-qualification process prior to us issuing the bid package for folks to bid on it. So we really vetted the comp, the companies. We, we wanted to make sure that we had a company that was well poised to perform strongly for the college on this complex project, both from an HVAC and finishes. And quite frankly, from a time window where they have a six-month window to complete a significant amount of work. And there's no option for them to miss that date without severe penalties. We actually built financial penalties into the contract on a per day basis. And so we wanted to make sure we had contractors that were well qualified for this. We took everybody through a, a pre-bid process. That's skinning it down from about 13 that originally participated in pre-bid down to six that made it through the pre-bid process. And then we asked those to bid and, and you see the results of that. The bids were all the way from north, close to 10.5 million down to eight, to 8.7 million with Stenco. We're asking the board to give us a approval to go up to a full 9 million with Stenco. Because we anticipate once we open the walls up, there are some things you just can't find until you really can get in and oh, open the walls and the ceiling up. So we'd like a little bit of, of tolerance against the actual bid amount that they bid, which was eight, 8,742,000 to give us some breeze, some breathing room for the unexpected that might occur. You know, time is going to be of the essence, right? We are going to be meeting multiple, multiple times a week with the contractor. Weekly going through a very detailed process. And we're going to need to make infield decisions very quickly to keep this project on, on time. And so going from the bid amount of 8,742 up to 9 million gives us a little bit of tolerance to deal with things right in the field that, that'll be there. The other thing that I'll just note for the board, that Stenco is also a minority business owner firm. And so we, we really value that strongly as well. And so that is our recommendation, both for the size of the project, the funding for that project, and then also the contractor for that project. And then lastly, that just in sum, in summary, that the three major capital projects are roughly 20 million dollars. That, that in, that in addition to the ML project, which the board had already approved nine other 10 million to be general fund reserve. We, we believe, given the strength that you've seen from our, from our financial forecast, that we can fully fund the 20 million out of general fund reserves. And part of that strength comes from how we've been able to both manage through the pandemic and also the lost revenue recovery, which will help to restore some of the, the general fund erosion that occurred as a result of, of the pandemic. So it's going to, it's, it's going to restore general fund. And as a result of all that, that we still believe the college will be in very strong financial shape. It's CFI ratio, composite financial index ratio, which today is in the mid 4.5 range that, that we believe that we'll be able to stay at that range for the planning price that, that, that we mentioned. And that's the end of our presentation.
Two, two things that I'd like to ask. Should, should I?
Go ahead Dave, yes, please.
Thank you. First off, I'm assuming. First off, I'm assuming at some point soon, we'll be meeting in person again. And we do have our board meetings there, or historically, that's where we've met. Has there been thought at this time, while we're doing the renovation, to putting some improvements in the audiovisual capacity of the meeting room that we usually use in order to, to enhance what we, right now, we show our meetings via recording on our website to improve the quality of those recordings? Or even to add some capacity to live stream, potentially, our meetings? It would be great to, while we're doing this, to take a look at that. Because now is the time. If we're going to be able to invest, now is the time to do that. And then, secondly, I'm wondering, these three projects, I'm anticipating, again, looking forward to the possibility of infrastructure funding at the federal government to bring some of their support for infrastructure as added support into any of these projects. I'm not sure how the timeline works. But if we could bring some of that federal support, infrastructure support into this, and with the Morris Lawrence Building in particular, which is such an important facility for the entire county, that it's so widely used for so many uses in addition to the educational uses that we have. If we could mobilize some of that federal, admittedly, I'm looking, projecting that we may have this available if there would be the capacity to bring some of that federal dollar, so those federal dollars into our projects.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Vardy. We will look hard at both of those items.
At what point would it be prudent, will it be prudent to begin rebooking Morris Lawrence for community events?
I think, you know, generally speaking, folks are going out a minimum of a year out. So I, I would anticipate that we are already doing bookings for starting in July of '22.
And we have every reason to believe that demand will be great and bookings will be high?
I think, I think from what I've heard from the staff that works with the public on that, there's very, very strong demand. And so I don't anticipate any issues there.
Good to hear.
I have a question, Chair Milligan.
Please proceed.
Um, will the, would there be an increase in rental space now that there'll be, you know, for the renovation for the building? Will there be an increase in the facility space for that?
Trustee Davis, do you mean the, just the, the amount of space that is available for rent?
Well, will the, will the cost of renovating the ML building, will that be passed on to our consumers to rent the space for whatever their needs may be?
That is a really good question. We are, so we are looking hard at the possibility of increasing the rent, the rental rates, which are very, very modest today, to help to reflect the value of the improved facilities. However, we also know that we are here to support the community. So any rate, any rate increases that we do need to be tempered through the service to our community aspect as well.
Any other questions on this presentation?
I have a question, Ruth Hatcher.
Please, trustee Hatcher.
Um, I guess it's not a major thing, but won't we have to reconfigure the childcare center for WTMC? Or will they pay for that? Or how does that work?
Trustee Hatcher, that's a really good question. So we, so we have not yet, you know, met with WTMC to review that space. But when we do, we anticipate there'll be some renovation costs and that we would anticipate that those costs would be reflected either in the increased rates that they're now paying the college, the contribution rate they pay to the college for use of space, or and/or that it'll be an outright reimbursement to the college for that.
Okay, thank you.
I guess one thing is certain, there'd be reduced demand for small chairs there. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Do you have, are you able to determine the estimate of the life of all of the new renovations for the ML building? So that seems like, you know, we've been discussing this for so long when Vice President Damon Flowers was there. And there was a different rendition of the facade in the front from what you just showed us now. So I know that this is an architect rendition of what they think it is, but I know what we saw way before this. So my question is, what, how, about how long would these renovations last? The, through wear and tear, I know we have a multiple, multiple about amount of people coming through that facility.
Are you asking what the useful life is, Diane?
The useful life, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's a trustee McKnight-Moore, that's a really good question. There's, in terms of the finishes on the outside, although the actual design of those, those spaces is slightly different. A lot of the materials are the same. So Damon Flowers had, had, had spec metal, metal wrap, you know, you know, around the existing structure in many places. So those are, those are going to have a life between 20 and 30-year minimum, as long as we maintain that. The HVAC systems should have a 25 to 30-year life on them. You know, the flooring, actually going with the terraza flooring, that's one of the things that we took into account. That is, that should have a very, very long life, you know, for that. And we've also been looking at the finishes on the walls, knowing that the walls get a lot of wear and tear, both from the movement of the equipment and people. So we're choosing finishes there that are very, are very durable.
Oh, okay.
President Blanca?
Yeah.
We're listening you.
We have a deferred maintenance schedule.
Yes.
And all of this equipment, all of these renovations, whether where they're at, should be their deferred maintenance schedule. So that when you see it, what the plan is, it should show you how long that terraza floor is going to last, how long that roof is going to last. And actually, I hope we've been doing that with all of our renovation. Because that should always, always keep that up.
Okay.
Yep. Bill, you're familiar with this deferred maintenance schedule?
That is right.
President Blanca referred to?
So, so, so President Blanca is referring to, in the CAP, the CAPLAL report that we actually present to the board each year and file with the state, there's something called an FCI, Facility Condition Index. And that's looking at each building and each component of every building. And depending upon the rigor of our maintenance on those components and outside firm and outside databases are used to then determine the remaining useful life for each of those components. Based upon that master plan, that helps to inform us around our annual deferred maintenance budget.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions on Bill's presentation?
I can just comment that it sounds like with 20 years or so, my COVID baby boomers will enjoy the Morris Lawrence Building.
Well done.
Bill, does that conclude your remarks?
It does, thank you.
Chair Milligan. President Blanca, do you have any closing remarks?
So, thank you so much. If the board has any questions, please do not hesitate.
Thank you. Well, this concludes our trustee spring retreat. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Vardy moved to adjourn.
We have a motion and we have support. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Vardy?
Vardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Moore?
McKnight-Moore, yes.
Our retreat is adjourned. Thank you for your time this afternoon.